Good morning. I call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 12th. Would those who care to join me and the rest of the board at the same time please?
But ladies and gentlemen, I am the Secretary of State for American Health and introduce your colleague for which we stand as oil nation under our God in this room with a duty and a justice to serve.
I'd like to welcome Supervisor Sanders back to the office. He's been on some adventures and travels. Hope you had a great time and you have some...
Cussering was better than Washington DC.
No surprise though, but I'm sure he enjoys talking politics too and about it so. It's public comment number one and this comment period is for people to press topics on today's agenda. Although we're gonna pretty much have people come up as the agenda insists. But if there's something that you feel that you'd like to address and you can't stay for it or something else that you'd like to address with us now would be the first opportunity to do so. No one's getting up, so we'll go ahead and we'll move on to items four and five, which are related to each other and I'm gonna invite Sheriff Paul Fitzgerald to come up and along with Mick Murray and John Assiston and I'm sure they're all welcome at all. Go ahead please.
Well, we have received word while we're on that two of our detention officers have received orders from the military. And they're going to be you guys employed for 400 days and leaving and I believe it's around the first of July. However, between now and July, they're going to run at every time that they've had training to prepare for their deployment overseas. So what we are here today on this request is to ask that we be authorized to hire, to backfill those positions, which will pay us above our normal appropriated amount of employees. Once these two employees return, then through attrition, a new position will be backed down to the authorized rate where we are. This is something that in my 27th year sheriff, we've done this a few times when we actually went behind where extended hearing. So this is in line with previous requests.
Supervisors, any questions?
Yeah, so for the sheriff, but really more for Connie. So how do we stand so this is gonna impact this year's budget and salary dollars? If we go over and these two do not depart until the start of next fiscal year, how are we sitting on budget and salary dollars versus actually use of this?
We're actually very good. I did agree realistically, if we were to put conditional offer up to two people today, they're realistically not gonna start to look like people. So I look to see how much this is gonna cause to benefits shifted for our new salary and everything. I'm looking at about oh, just $126,000 for the two DOs. I did go through and guarantee people that we did not have working. We had two DOs that have been, are two paid positions since the end of August and the middle of September and I did figures for that and we got not paid in salaries and benefits approximately $90,000 for those two. Now, I realize that there's been overtime obviously covered the people that have been gone. But I, with all the ethno-lying we've had in the jail, vacant positions, family sick, vacations, it's difficult to say how many overtime hours were specifically for those two that were manning. But I know it wasn't $10,000, so it's probably a bit of wash as far as... Cause I only have $70,000.
As I understand this, that these two are being hired as temporary positions?
No, they'll be hired as full-time positions and they'll have that. And when the other two come back at the end of 400 days of employment, as the jail is probably not, as it is the largest position in the sheriff's office, it's also has no turnover in any other division. So we will either know before they return that people are going to be leaving and then we'll be told to go late, go slots late, tell them come. And we're at full strength when they return, we'll be above the two authorized rate until two others leave or sat down and then we'll just go back to the normal overrated number of full-time positions.
And when discussion had been kind of about this, as you were building into coming today, that was the part that concerned me a little bit after I thought about it more because we could end up, not likely even a turnover as detention officers there, but we could end up in a situation where you would be overstaffed and someone or two people resign then if both officers who had gone on military leave decide to come back also, that's the other threat.
Well, the possibility, the potential is certainly there. But I believe if you look back on history, as the example Connie just said, we are hitting too short since August and trying to fill. And so it's something that I don't believe is going to be an issue upon their return. And I think we'll see sort of if we set up.
If you have somebody leaves, say a couple of months before, one of those people's gonna come down, one of those officers is gonna come back, would you then just make sure of what position you're open for a couple of months rather than hiring somebody?
We probably would, but I would also want to look at the current status of where we are. We might get other people out on extended waiting for other employees. And if it's set up, there's times where we try to hire as quick as we can because when you hire someone in law enforcement agency, you don't hire at the end of a week's training and they're on their own. They gotta go through state training, then they come back, they gotta go through the three-month field training offer to mission. So by the time they're back in this, it's gonna be called the agency that's settling us down.
What is your...
Sure, if you choose to assist with the... Well, here again, we have in the jail, what you'll see is folks will take a job in the jail as the body of honor or latter they may look at as they wanna get into law enforcement, the street officers or county, city. And there are times where I hire people out of the sheriff's office to be deputy sheriffs. Like the situation that we'll be talking about next, we have two other agencies in Story County that can even run the credit for eight times. We have one agency that's hiring two of our detention officers and another agency that's hiring one of our dispatches. So I think that shows we hire quality people here. But it's kind of race sometimes who can offer me sworn certified police officer positions.
How many authorized positions do you have in the house detention officers?
How many detention officers do I have? Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. So Connie, can you tell me what you, you wanna see as right?
Um, with the history, it's not the average of five a year.
Five a year?
Yeah. And it means it seems this last year really hit us hard. I think this last year has been a little bit harsh.
Actually, we have exposure to sound.
About one every other month. So you had to prove about one every other month, that's the average, yes. You would have some flexibility to project forward and self-concern that does supervisor Olson, yeah, you can read this.
One of the other problems that I know that we talked about is that in a short time, we are going to be down to five positions in the jail. And that reflects, is not good for those that are left to fill because things offer canceled, vacations sometimes are canceled and we gotta have people to staff those positions. And that really creates tremendous drain on staff that's left until we can get back in full strength.
And I know as you have mentioned here at the board table, just in all sorts of conversations we've had, it's just not the detention officers who hold that title who are being stressed, but your command staff, your jail commander and the assistant commander are filling in for shifts.
Yeah, please, it's not uncommon to see jail commander John Olson, not fully known as a detention officer, who would want to shift and make support doing things that detention officers usually do. And that's on top of the other things that he has as an advisor.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, so I'd just say it looks, it sounds to me like, so this clearly has an impact for FY19, but we've got dollars in the budget to the jail, but largely it's not gonna have any impact in 2020 because these two positions are gone for 400 days. So to have this conversation again, I would imagine as we're talking budget for 2021, we'll see where we are and how things are going. So I'd make, I'd make the motion of, I guess, allowing the sheriff's office to go above approved positions and hire two additional detention officers in preparation for two of our current detention officers leaving on military leave.
What's the motion? For the discussion? Sanders?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Olson, aye. Good for that.
Thank you.
And then we're gonna move on next to the conditional offer for a detention officer.
Yes, this is kind of, this is a little bit more complex, but along the same lines. Whereas we have a balance in the jail, a male and female detention officers. We're having two detention officers that have been offered conditional offers to become, I would say, university police officers. And so we're expecting those two departing, but we have a male and a female. So we're looking at, we have a list for males, but we do not have a list for females. So we're urging to put together a list and do testing. So we're only asking for the one position because by the time we get the testing completed, scored, interviewed, the people ready to come on out of the office, it'd just be a little time we would need to figure. But we'd like to show an detention officer position so we can get that person a little bit farther along in training should any of these people leave.
Questions or comments from the board? I have none. I entertain a motion. I have a feeling that we have a position request.
Sorry.
Right, no discussion, so Murphy?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson, aye. Thank you, Sheriff, thank you very much. Now I'm gonna invite... Yes, okay. Now we're gonna switch to a discussion. It's actually a continuation of the discussion and consideration. The financial support for $3 million towards the construction of a $48 million Healthy Life Center proposal for the city of Ames and a commitment to provide an ongoing operating subsidy of $200,000 per year. As viewing this as more of a continuation than a separate process, we're going to not have a formal presentation from anyone on the Healthy Lifestyle Committee. And then the board, if either one of the board members have a presentation, otherwise I will have two slides.
So just clarification, of course, what you've got here on our agenda says it's operating subsidy of $200,000 per year. I thought we had agreed the last time we spoke that it was up to $200,000 a year and not reset $200,000, so I'm just looking for clarification.
Sure, we just brought it right over as it was listed last time since it was a continuation. So it's continuity and listing for that as no decision had been made. So that's why the phrase was exactly the same. All right, now I'm gonna just, I've been contacted by some people who've, they're asking me to justify where I got my impression about where we stand on the budget and/or offered kind of a deals or their own ideas about how we can pay for the entire $3 million. I'm gonna respond with a few slides to where I've gotten my numbers from. Could I give you a little idea of who you've done now? Sure, yeah. Okay, so the county funds a little differently than the city as far as how we levy. And that's one thing I learned in some of the contacts that we made. So we have a general fund that's mapped that 3.5% and I'm not doing your presentation, Lee, so these are just a few, okay.
I'm sorry, I understand that 3.5%.
Oh, $3.50. That's a tight one, but $3.50, okay.
Our general fund levy is $3.50, it can't be any more than that without, without special circumstances.
Correct. We do have the option, let's see if I've got it right on here, yes. But we are given the option of a supplemental general fund. And we published for the fiscal year 20 budget that our levy for this supplemental general fund would be $1.02 for each $1,000. And so the published dollars that we've put out is that we expect $4,994,606. At one point in the process, as we were trying to set our levy, we did discuss a lower levy amount, as you see here. And then those dollars that were discussed internally are $4,652,443. And so the difference, as we discussed later today, where we're going to end up accruing our budget, the difference between the one that was published and one alternate that we discussed during our budget sessions is $342,000. And the key, I feel, as it adheres to this discussion today is that at $342,000 extra in our general fund, it would take three years to yield $1 million. So the $3 million requested would be us at some type of higher levy, similar to what we published or even higher next year, to yield the $3 million if it comes out of our general fund. And then I just made a reference here for, in case we recall this during the budget discussion itself. We do have, we are able to do urban renewal and revitalization funds or TIF funds. And we have obligated a lot of that TIF revenue of our revenue, carp stream, in the last few years, primarily around the Tedesco Environmental Learning Corner. So the numbers you're, I'm gonna present next are the projected, once they're projected. Because until we get to the whole year, the auditor is not, auditor's department is not really able to come down to the panic. So these are projected. And these are projected available for Story County's policy of encumbering a maximum of 50% of the TIF revenues and leaving 50% for the townships, the school districts, and other taxing entities. Most of this money comes from wind turbines. So using a predicted chart, this is a draft, this is a best estimate that we were provided internally, I just pulled some key numbers off, I think applicable to this discussion. In fiscal year 20, we are only going to have $77,000 left over from our 50% allocation. Fiscal year 21 will have $74,000 roughly. And in fiscal year 22, we'll have roughly $67,000. Clearly, this is not a million, a billion, or a million. But even I was optimistic in my original thoughts about maybe $500,000 a year as far as any type of cash flowing. What happens in 22 is that we pay off a bond, a bond that's through TIF. And so the estimated available revenues go up in fiscal year 23 to about $340,000, $34,000. And then you can see it stays pretty steady until fiscal year 27, when we get up to $609,000. So my point here, my, I make a statement I made in the paper, is given the two funding sources that are available to us, which would be the general funds, where the money would come from and then we'd use some supplemental funds to kind of backfill ourselves, if you will, or the TIF, I can't find a way to get to the request.
Can we, of course, go back to that slide?
Yes, sure.
Because I questioned, I questioned all those numbers, but I specifically questioned the top three. Are you calculating that they're increasing valuation? Are you calculating in there wind towers that have not reached their maximum valuation or in a couple cases don't have any valuation? Are you calculating all that in there? Because I think those numbers are misperformed and flawed.
Okay, they are the numbers that I believe I requested from the deputy auditor based upon what we could realistically know now. It is my understanding that that's her best projection given the data she has now. I don't know whether the two that still come on, the two that still come on, are you talking about they're ramping up or they will start at the 5%?
Either it's still 5% growth, whether they're starting or they're in the middle of ramping, they're still growing every year.
There is growth, but I guess I'd like to point out that all of these numbers are representative of what, about 150 wind turbines? How many do you think we're going to have? Two or three?
I looked at the in order for that.
Okay, but so as far as the percentage, if you wanna go ahead and figure out if this is what 150 are yielding, how much more will three yield, especially if they're just beginning?
But they're yielding a million, they're yielding a million two or a million three a year in available TIF dollars. And then a lot of it is going to sort of pay that from Dakers Lake we're working on and now the research program we're working on. But isn't really saying that roughly a million, two million, three a year that comes out of the TIF?
No, it's like 90,000. Yeah, it's 888,000 I would estimate, it's not 1.2 or 3. Okay, so those are the numbers that we have the best estimates on. So just to give somebody, I was questioning again about where that TIF money has gone that we spent. We have paid out actually $7.7 million. We have approved this year another $1 million we expect to pay out for the Tedesco Environmental Learning Center during fiscal year 20, headed for its opening in June of next year. So we have put 4.7 million of those dollars outside of Ames, but we have put $4 million of those dollars in Ames. So there was some question about whether Ames was getting any of that money. Once again, the majority of it's coming from the wind farms in the northern part of the county, but we are getting some from like Vetter and as, for example. The first big issue was mostly for Dakers Lake, the Vetter and then the bike trail going outside of Nevada. So taking a look at sample bonding payments in general. One of the other numbers that were put out, actually requested by a former board member, Ron Ford borrowing the $1 million, the last $1 million for TELC. And these numbers that were projected, once again, projected numbers, at a $1 million borrowed at 3% for 10 years is a payment of $119,000 per year annual payment. It's very rough, don't anybody get out here if I need to calculate later here, okay? But the point is, is that for the first three years, we wouldn't even have the minimum yielded by TIF per the projected numbers to cover the annual payment. We can, I understand, restructure or structure the debt so that it would be almost an interest-only payment for the first three years and then it would have to pay out more on the back end. $3 million, I just basically took these numbers and multiplied by three. $3 million at 3% for 20 years is approximately a $350,000 per year annual payment there. Okay, and that's it. So those are just the numbers that I've been asked several times about, why don't you think they can afford this? So, and thank you. And I believe Supervisor Murphy asked to speak next.
Thank you, Superintendent. And I appreciate that review and I also appreciate the time that we had and the consent into our film. Quite a good information for our last meeting and I appreciate the time for that. I had to look at that and also do some of my own research. Yeah, I agree, it's a very broad project. It's thorough, not a good planning and definitely going into a great amount of concerns about the request for the county to enter into a premium funding arrangement. First, I was looking at, I'm saying secondary, secondary service maps. And this is on page six of the consultant's 100 page report. And it includes as a secondary service area, Story City, Nevada, Huxley, and Story County, and then Magic Moon, but also by quote, include Gulf and Catalina, I presume, in Story County. The report mentions that there is a wellness center in Story City and Huxley and Nevada. The report did not include the one that's called the Three Seas in Huxley. So it's the Citizens Community Center. I visited the Huxley Center, I visited the Story City Community Health Center, I also spoke with the city administrator in Nevada, see what the plans will be here. Both the Huxley and the Story City Wellness Centers, they're a little bit different, but they're both very well thought out, they're very well developed. They have a very good usage in their areas. The Huxley is 11,000 square feet, has basketball courts, a baseball and running track, a racquetball court, and weight rooms, and do a lot of classes. Very similar in Story City, the Story City project, as we believe and may know, it's blended with Mary Green Medical Center. And they, they have lots of, besides Story City, lots of people from the northern part of Story County and the southern part of Hamlet County and all that. They've both been, I think Huxley started in 2003 and Story City went into 2005. They're wellness establishment programs. Nevada has, several of you know, has a score outdoor recreation and they have numerous outdoor options at aquatic centers, which is for summer, baseball, softball, tennis, basketball, soccer, playground, and pavilion. It's very impressive. The county did support development with $36,000 local option, sales tax money, one-time money, I understand, for score. And also there's a cat grant of $200,000 for Story City and the county put a $20,000 match there. So there has been some one-time money into those two, Huxley, I understand, was a city bond issue plus other money which the county did not participate in. Nevada's planned indoor facility, estimated cost of $5 million. They set me up in more field grounds than a residential, but it would have 3,500 square feet, three basketball and oddball courts and multi-purpose rooms and offices. And they are including some more multi-purpose space for future needs. That's their current plan. That's come down, it was from plan they had some years back, but they're fully good about the plan and it's appropriate. Collins, also you may know, recently opened a wellness center. I've not been down there and visited, but I did just have the mayor, Colin, just got by. Incidentally, the seat he was using down and he told me about that. I guess their shares are whatever they put into that. Collins is not in the secondary service area, the consultants, that the consultants drew on his map, but the other places are. I really have some concerns that, that the consultant's numbers of how many people they think will come from the secondary service area will already come there, given the well-developed, well-developed centers in Story City and Huxley and also the plans from Nevada. I do know that the city of Ames, there are several county residents who work in the city and they may be, because of that, will go to the health center. Given some information from the doctor in the clinic, but a third of the employees are outside of Ames. They may be motivated because they work at a clinic and one of the setting, they may be motivated, but I'm just not sure that we're getting to the numbers. All the other examples I've seen, the county's contributed money, and I may be wrong. Um, all the other examples I've seen, um, counties contributed money, and I may be wrong, um, but to something that the county did not own, were one-time, one-time numbers and pretty much smaller numbers than were being asked here. Um, I have trouble with the county paying ongoing operating expenses. We have several things in the county that are on our plate that we are in the midst of, need to be finished. And to take that much money annually out of our, what's available for county essential uses or purposes and put that to a new project, at this point, I don't think it was wise. Um, and I think if we made an ongoing commitment toward operating expenses, that other cities might likely expect similar support and are able to take that.
It's all awesome.
So, that would have been further funding with the county debt for central services, roads and bridges, for the interoperability communication system that we're working on for the first responders. We have a watershed, um, for, um, that the previous board, those right, I've had a lot of foresight putting together county, county board, watershed for. There are a lot of things that need to be done to make that reality. We're just beginning that. And we know right now we're giving the, uh, the group of employees, but we know we're going to need more resources if we're going to address water quality in the county. So, I'm, I'm very, I'm very concerned about that. And, and I, um, I've also heard from folks location, some people are not happy with that. I know that there was a lot of looking, but, but being on the northwest side of Ames doesn't strike people as being very accessible to other businesses in the county. Um, I've heard from many people from Ames and others who can pay up for support of the county providing funding. I've heard from some complaints who do not support it and I've heard from some people out in our coastal county who do not support it. So, um, I know Hartland Senior Services is a major basis, I understand that, but I understand Hartland's raised three and a half million dollars, um, towards the need and, um, I'm glad to hear that. If this doesn't happen, no, I wish everybody will know this happens, I just don't see the county's role in this nature as, as being.
Yeah, and so, um, I guess I'll take my point back because I think, I think pretty clearly I feel differently about this than you guys do. Uh, the first thing I would say is I count, uh, three, six, thirteen, uh, wind towers that have ever added since two thousand and thirteen, which are going to be ramping up. Uh, I think the numbers are artificially low and at least presented. Um, I think, let me hear a hundred percent right, at least in my knowledge, and I would actually look to Jane Halber, there's a long history of Story County participating with the upfront cost in projects similar to this and not much of a history of ongoing, uh, operations. I think this is kind of a unique, uh, opportunity for the citizens of Story County. And so it makes me feel a little differently. And the way that's funded, uh, as I see it is, in fact, based on, and you pointed this out right a couple times, a nickel increase in property taxes raises to two hundred thousand dollars, up to two hundred thousand dollars a year in ongoing costs. I, I believe that the dollars are there, um, to be able to run this through, uh, urban renewal. I think it is an appropriate use of the urban renewal, uh, dollars at a million dollars a year, uh, over the next three years. That, that's actually, it doesn't start for the next, uh, eighteen months, uh, the way you call the math word. And I think it is important, um, well, I, I would do that. So, so we have been so fortunate here in Story County, uh, to be, uh, involved in these conversations at the staff level from day one. We had Deb Shoroff, uh, serve as, as our representative, uh, on these conversations. And, and to my knowledge, Deb's attended every meeting and been part of the conversation. And, and I think we're being a little short-sighted if we don't get some input from the person that we've asked, that we've tasked, uh, with being our representative in this. And I don't recall that other than just giving us an artificial presentation, we've ever sat here, the three of us at one meeting, and asked for Deb to come up and, and give us her thoughts as she's evaluated this. And then the final thing, I, I, so I'd like to have Deb come up for us. And then the final thing that I would say, Lynn, I think you're right that we've never seen dollars approaching this, but we very clearly see percentage of projects approaching this, three million to forty-eight million is comparable to what we've put in percentage-wise to other projects. Um, so, that, that's where I come down on all of this. And, Morris, I would request that we have Deb Shoroff come up, because I'd like to ask her opinion on all of this. She's been part of this all the way through.
And my question is, did you talk to her first about this?
I, I've mentioned to her that I might ask her to come up depending on how the conversation is going.
Okay, um, and I, I, I hear right there, Deb, tell you that how the conversation is going, um, all right, Deb, if you want to give your opinion, um, I don't know that we sent you as a, we sent you as a staff person not to give an opinion, but you may do what you feel is appropriate.
So, great history. Um, I was asked by, um, Paul Toots in February two thousand and sixteen, following the meeting that he had had with Nancy Carroll, um, about putting together a steering committee, having representatives sit on that, um, steering committee. So, um, I went to Sarah, you know, the capacity of the jobs for the county. And, um, I link in all the conversations with identifying the needs in the community, not only the Hartland Senior Services needs and what they do for the community, but as a whole, Mary Green's, um, needs with their warm water pool, their therapy pool, their, um, physical therapy, um, services, and then adding kind of the components of the indoor pool and making it a concept that, as you all heard, is near generational serving, serving Ames and Story County. Um, I've seen the numbers within both the meetings, um, listening to the consultants talk about the, the price tag of this and what it takes to make such a concept come to fruition. Um, the numbers are, are out there for all of us to see in, in terms of the three million dollar capacity to come in that the annual operating costs. And again, remember that the annual operating costs for the health, um, level, the, the cost that, um, all the county residents would, would have to, to pay to participate in this particular, um, facility. So, I do support in terms of what is being asked from the steering committee for the purpose of the program, but we all have a decision life.
Correct. Also, people have found it too many of the costs because since you did sit on that committee and you were representing the county, what did you think when it went from twenty-six to twenty-eight millions to forty-eight million dollars? Were you involved in those conversations that jumped, that got larger and more from when we were originally talking? And you did not, uh, were you aware of the county's financial situations and at the time?
At that point in time, Morris, that there was no aspects to be formed to the county. I mean, it was still putting those figures together and determining the breakdown between the different entities that the table will take away, um, that's your, your boards. And so, I mean, the, the large percentage of the cost had to do with the, the pools and that was explained to us.
Okay, so, um, I, I guess, I, I'm a little uncomfortable with a staff person giving this type of assessment, okay? Uh, with the, with the shoes thinking that if we should do this, are you giving us that advice?
We get recommendations from staff all the time.
I know, but it, not that I started a, uh, I think this is different work we ask the county, but I'll, I'll give to you whatever.
Yeah, and, and if I could just push back one thing, so I keep, I keep hearing this doom and gloom on the county's financial position, of course, and I, I've got to push back on that. So, uh, the reality is, there's not been a time in the last, oh, my goodness, in the last thirty years anyway, that the county's been in a stronger fiscal position than it is today. We ended the last fiscal year with over twenty-two million dollars in reserves, that's up from seven million dollars just a decade ago. County has, for a long time, been the lowest per capita taxing and spending county in the state, about ninety-nine out of ninety-nine. We remain there to this day. We'll see where we are as we publish these new numbers. Um, and, and as far as, we're not taxing at our maximum allowable levels in our southern mountain. We're not taxing at our maximum allowable levels in our liberal fund. We have worked really, really hard and, and before me, uh, before you guys and with you guys, we worked really hard to be responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars. And when a project like this, that is one of one, I mean, we all try to compare things to other things, but this is a one of one kind of opportunity, um, that, that best case scenario, the people of Ames, who are going to be the ones paying for this, the people of Ames should get a reasonable opportunity to vote for themselves and see what's happening. And what I don't appreciate and what I disagree with is using some kind of artificial doom and gloom about our budget situation when it's as strong as it's ever been, including the one that we're going to adopt later today. Um, it's as strong as ever been.
Well, I'd like to point out that I got the numbers from the auditor's office. I did not make these numbers up. And nor did I the hundred and nineteen thousand dollars a year, all right? And that, as I'm going to point out, was requested by a previous board member, right, by the previous board. So, nobody's sitting here finagling the numbers up. We are going to, uh, later on, see a slide that shows that for the first time in seven years, if, depending on how you interpret what a balanced budget is, we are going to go ahead and put a million dollars that we show in reserve upfront on this budget to go ahead and have a balanced budget. Now, I didn't have time to go ahead and really take a look at where we end our budget every year, but last year for our balanced budget upfront, we ended up, it was a six million dollars spread. And that's on right there. You can take a look there. You're even going to pull anybody out because we have been tested. Yeah, when we're not, when it comes up here, it's a little.
If you're pulling money out, how are the reserves going up, or so?
They don't show it on our budget that we're pu, that we published. It shows our reserves will be down another million dollars from the ending fund balance of this year to twenty. When we pulled it up on the screen, take a look, it's eighteen million and it's down to seventeen million. Last time I did the math, that's a million less.
Absolutely. Mine, that's all based, and, and this year's budget is based on projects that were approved in one fiscal year or the funding was received in one fiscal year and then utilized in the next fiscal year. And so there's no doubt that this year, we are going to budget to spend a million dollars of these reserves that we built up. But the reality is, we were bumping up against what's appropriate. So, we don't get the whole taxpayer dollars. That's not what we're here for.
I agree with that.
And we were bumping up against it. Seven million was too low, twenty-two million is too high.
And I remember that, uh, was a forty-one mil, forty-one percent, sorry, I, I flip my millions sometimes. Okay, forty-one percent, I believe the first year I came on the board was where our general fund was, which is too much money. So, we have been buying it down. But I want to point out, as me saying it's doom and gloom, we are publishing this doom and gloom numbers. So, if our numbers are right, I guess we'll have that discussion later on when we have the.
Yeah, I don't see what we got published as doom and gloom though. That, that's the difference between you and I is, I see, I see the numbers that we got published and the tax rates that were proposed, whether we go at the dollar two supplemental or the ninety-two supplemental. Uh, the numbers we got published, much as we've done for years, are realistic budget numbers with us doing what we need to be doing and showing plenty of funds in reserve for the rainy day. I've talked to you since you joined the board and probably even before, that the key for us is to set budgets that allow us to have flexibility from unforeseen circumstances. We're doing that. We've done it and we're doing it.
That, that, I think another component of that is unforeseen circumstances that are seen as, as something that enhances. And quite frankly for me, and I've noticed this before, about, um, the use of TIF funds starting to be for projects that offer return, and offer return.
Yeah, that's just a change of philosophy from what Story County has been doing.
Correct, that's correct.
This is interesting.
But please don't say my, if my numbers are incorrect, they've been generated out of another department and they've been published incorrectly, uh, because they are the numbers.
No, the numbers I'm, the numbers I'm questioning were the ones that were on the screen on TIF revenues. And, and as far as the rest of the budget, all I'm saying is, you're taking the numbers that are published and I think offering a doom and gloom perspective on something that I don't believe the numbers as public offer a doom and gloom.
All right, if we go back to those numbers though, it clearly showed that we don't have a lot left over in TIF revenue for the next three years for the rest of the county. If they come up with a proposal, the mayor Collins was here this morning, he stopped by to see you on the way out. He said, "Morris, if I could have you know five thousand dollars of TIF, we could have a grocery store in Collins." I said, "How do you do that?" And he explained, that co, community co-op, that twenty-five thousand dollars, all right, would be to renovate and bring in, in coolers or whatever. What's the bigger impact economically for that same twenty-five thousand dollars? Co, uh, Collins, the mayor, can identify where that would be an immediate economic impact. That would put immediate dollars back in. Twenty-five thousand is very little in this request, over three million plus the ongoing two hundred thousand dollars. But we've gone by into this, we don't have money left over.
Sure, but, but I think, absolutely, but I think that's a separate conversation because the reality is, if we want to put on an agenda and talk about our urban renewal plan and how it's structured and how we can keep our townships whole. So, the one thing that you don't point out there is, our schools are largely made whole, primarily the Coloniesco school district, but they're largely made whole, and so that's forty-eight percent roughly of the TIF dollars that are coming through the county are replaced by the state. It's like new dollars coming to Story County. And us being able to leverage those for positive impacts, a grocery store in Collins or a healthy life center in Ames, for positive impacts for people from Story County, I believe philosophically is completely appropriate. And I think that's our job to have those kind of conversations and we want to bet on that.
Okay, and again, we're happy to bring it back because we had discussed before about what economic development programs we were going to stick with. And we had that, we said we're going to stick with, but we don't have. So, um, and in response, uh, about the, um, school districts, and I've said this to a couple of different people who have asked me about this, that is funded year by year by the legislature. And when was the last time you funded a hundred percent of those dollars?
I don't think ever.
Ever.
But, but that does not negate the reality that there are, uh, hundreds of thousands of dollars coming to Story County that would not be coming to Story County if we weren't running this program, every single year.
And part of that, to look at, philosophy is, from the very start, uh, Story County has had a policy of only taking fifty percent of the dollars.
I wrote that policy.
I know that. So, and you very strongly advocated for it over the years. Quite a lot of your advocacy has been that, that, um, clawback, or, oh, sorry, wrong word, uh, so that that backfill to the school districts exists. We have heard Bob Johnston, before I was on the board, sit here and, and talk about that it literally was on the committee floors to pull it. It's been, um, uh, on the bank in front of the legislature two or three different times that that money won't continue. And, uh, we don't know from year to year. So, entering into this type of agreement with the expectations, given that that money will continue to flow to the Coloniesco school district with what we can see has happened from year to year and multiple attempts to pull it done at the legislature makes it a, probably a, a higher percentage bet than it does Bill one sixty-five will make it all the way into law.
Yeah, I don't think it's a higher percentage bet. It's not, it's not being discussed this year. In, in years it has been discussed, it's never had a realistic chance of passing. Um, but with that philosophy, Morris, and maybe that's the philosophy we have now, but we would not have done Dakers Lake if that's the philosophy we had. We would not have done the research part if that's the philosophy we had. Again, maybe that's the philosophy we had. That was a different board that did those things. Maybe this board is not going to have that philosophy of really, really positive, really impacting Story County. Um, when we have an, when we have an opportunity.
We have an opportunity to discuss this, then we all think of a way, way in what we think is appropriate to fund TIF dollars with. There are many ways to impact positively. So, appreciate that discussion. Took you a little bit off, but you can see how, how integral, you know, some of these funding sources we're talking about. Our supervisor, Merkin, we've kind of been going back and forth here, having the discussion, did you want to weigh in or take us in a new direction?
I'm just full of a couple of things. If Congress means it intercepts this, the property owners and dozens of Ames will have the ability to weigh in on this on both.
If it gets to that point.
If it gets to that point. If, uh, the county contributes through TIF, the other one-third of Story County residents do not have the ability to weigh in. I think that's something, that's not. I think that's something, that's another place I have a problem with. I'm, I'm coming to TIF. We've already done a huge TIF project that's in the city of lots of Ames. Another, um, very large, um, contribution to the city of Ames particularly. Um, I think that, I think that we need to know, I think they should know to say, well, this is some of those kind of tax dollars.
Yeah, I mean, so, by, by that philosophy, that assumes that we're not, as a county, pulling tax dollars out of Ames to spend another place in the county. And I think if you go around, it's gotta be approaching seventy percent of our tax dollars come out of the immediate Ames vicinity, and we're not spending seventy percent of our tax dollars that we collect, and we're clo- we're not spending on that third of the county. We, we primarily spend it in the two-thirds of the county that's east of, uh, I-35. And so, yeah, I, I've always viewed Story County as, uh, one county with boundaries. We gotta recognize where our population centers are. And, uh, I think that this is a completely appropriate opportunity to utilize TIF as it was intended to be used when Story County entered, uh, its method of using TIF. And again, if the philosophy changed, the philosophy changed, it just hasn't changed.
And I appreciate everyone in Story County started using TIF because, uh, I mentioned before, in my previous life, I covered TIF when, in, in how it was originally designed. With urban renewal revitalization liked and/or funding projects that the property came back over the tax rolls to wait, uh, to go ahead and pay. Uh, it wasn't, uh, a situation where one entity or one source of revenue came in to then cover the payments for some nonprofit thing or public entity. So, I just, I appreciate that, because it, TIF has a long, what, fifty, sixty-year history that various times it's done various things. Where we are now is that, um, uh, I'm going to, a community slips, and I appreciate that, as I put the word out, that we're all gonna leave it to people who had not addressed us already or if they had something else to say, uh, because this really was our time to talk. So, if there's anyone who feel they have not addressed us already or they have something new to say based upon what was sent to us, what was sent up here today, I invite that, those people to go forward.
I would like to address this.
Sure.
So, let me just say Jane Halliburton coming to a microphone in the, in the boardroom is very nostalgic. This is how I started watching.
Hi, welcome, Jenny, still former supervisor Halliburton.
Thank you. In full disclosure, I am a past member of Story County Supervisors, a past member of the Department of Public Services, if you can see. I'm a current member of the Department of Public Services. All these things go together, um, and the board can allow you to do that. I must say, first and foremost, I have been, continue to be extraordinarily proud of the staff of Story County. Staff of Story County always done an exceptional job. They have been recognized by the state, they have been recognized nationally. And I personally have seen the work that Deb Shoda has done over the past five years. I would ask the board, please, in the future, always allow your staff to make their recommendations based on their work. And to do it in a public way, so that the public understands them. She has been an exceptional woman, as all our employees have done and continue to be. Just to throw you the last word, because I know you said Rook had just returned to come to NaCo. NaCo has recognized Story County many, many times for our different achievements. And it's hopeless because of our staff. And I just can't help it. How honored we are today. How this staff, somebody's manager, who brought to the board the whole idea of doing a survey by the college and then the rest of the country to say, "What?" And he brought that to the board and he talks about it. And it has changed the way we do that sort of thing, and I just appreciate that greatly. I would ask the board to consider the, the implications of what will happen without the county's board. Because Hartland Senior Services has a long history of working with the county. The county tends to pay annually to the adult base center, this is a TIF program which we quite to hearten, but the adult base center is a unique thing that none of these other centers share. And if, in fact, we are not able to focus together in a living fashion, will the county support putting adult base centers in all of the community?
If you're asking, or, I mean, I don't want to interrupt if it was a retirement question. Would you like to be on the board?
No, I want to point out that the county has continued, has always supported Hartland, as you've spelled herself. And how we support Hartland is we pay a fee for service. And, uh, so, at some point, this board or another board is going to have to have the decision if the, you know, if the Healthy Life Center is not going to be the home for Hartland, about whether the county would, for the first time, contribute to a nonprofit agency in the building of the facilities. Because our county has always funded nonprofit facility, nonprofit services, and nonprofits in this county has been through fee for service. So, it's a new model to even say we would give, you know, we're giving money to Hartland for a physical, not for a physical space, just that's why I ask.
We can discuss the definition of the deserved laws, but I think that's a case to our. My, my point is that there are multiple ways that the county pays for it. And the partnerships that have been established. This is one of his life-type opportunities with the university, D-Wat, with Mary Greeley. I would like to see us try to find a way to work together to build on that partnership rather than have to start on four. And I just, that's why I'm asking the board, is please consider the implications of what happens if we are not able to do it. And thank you so much, I, I do appreciate each and every one of you that's here. I know this is a difficult topic, um, I wish I could say this is the most difficult topic we have, but unfortunately, I don't. I know you have many, many opportunities to do this. Thank you so much, and if I found anything in my twenty-four years, I'll think of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make an official sign. Okay, I believe, uh, somebody else stood up, so. Mary, uh, not you.
We understand.
John, go ahead.
I understand that there is a financial aspect to it, but I'd be interested. What I'm most encouraged by, you know, fifteen months I've been in office, is my sense is an attitude that permeates our county of working together. And former board last year, we, we sat around in a circle. Every community shared enthusiasm, what was going on in your communities. And it's positive, and it's a candid attitude. As you're aware, um, Nevada, we suffered, Nevada, they landed a one-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar expansion to burn. In part, just Ames was willing to take their stuff. And we didn't do it because of the fiscal situation, we didn't do it on purpose to strengthen the council. And what I would ask you to consider is, there's a fiscal component, there's also, are we gonna be leaders in the state? And are we going to be looking at opportunities to really set the standard? For all of us, in fact, that workforce is going to be an issue for decades. We want to continue to be forward-thinking, providing opportunities for families, for our community, for our surrounding communities, to not only attract or retain. We have doctors that want to come to Mary Greeley. They ask, "Where's the water seed?" Those doctors benefit the entire continent, it's not just the city of Ames, it's not a partial fund, we have to run out. We understand that we have a responsibility to all taxpayers in the county. I do ask you to take a bigger picture, a bigger vision of what we're trying to accomplish. This is unprecedented to have the county who has been reconsidered, Hartland, table, the city, a hospital, Partner Senior Services, D-Wat. I would say, it is unheard of that all these different organizations become unvined and work together for quality of life that benefits our county. We do appreciate the fact, please, we do appreciate the fact that you have the best of the Deska Funding Center, that is an investment, workforce is an investment. So, I understand that you have to balance the budget. I get it, we're doing the same thing here, we have similar challenges. But please, take a bigger picture, take a bigger vision of our trying to accomplish. And it's not just for Ames. And honestly, if Ames, we've said this before, Mayor Martin, I have talked several times, the fact is, what's good for Nevada is good for Story County. What's good for Ames, Story City, Oaxaca, is good for the county. You have to think of the region, you just can't be thinking about this. So, point number is, I ask you to seriously consider giving to the board how things work through, retrained, look for ways to really benefit, and is for the county. You can parse numbers all day long, you're gonna, we're gonna go back and forth on data. There's a philosophy here that I would, I would beg you to consider and realize that it can continue to strengthen, but I believe is one of the best, one of the best counties in all of the state, in the United States, where we have the opportunity to really benefit those.
Um, I'd like to address, at the previous meeting, there's so many here that thought that, um, leadership is not being fiscally responsible. And I'll respond the way I did a couple of weeks ago about the path of leader, thought of leadership being this, uh, vision is can be part of it, um, wanting big things can be part of it. But I still hold very firmly that fiscal responsibility is one of the main things that we get elected to do, it's the budget, and it's one of the main things that I believe in, I know when I vote for any city councilperson or mayor, I don't think fiscal responsibility changes. So, thank you. Anyone else care to address this? Alright.
Yeah, so I think it's hard to question, um, my commitment to fiscal responsibility. I don't, I don't think, uh, anybody can take a fair look at, uh, at my time on the board of supervisors and not recognize that in fiscal responsibility-wise with our taxpayer dollars, uh, has not ranked at the top of the list for me. That said, this is one of those moments, this is one of those opportunities that I think Story County is making a huge mistake if we don't continue in our partnership, uh, with developing a healthy life center. And so, I'm gonna make the motion, uh, that we support the, uh, construction of a forty-eight-million-dollar proposed healthy life center with three million dollars of one-time funds, and that we make a commitment to provide up to two-hundred-thousand dollars, uh, subsidy to the operations based on a sliding scale percentage of what the deficit actually is. Uh, I would suggest that if this passes, details will need to be worked out uh, between our legal councils, that's my motion. And if I can get a second, I've got something else to say.
I second courtesy because you would like to say the first.
Yeah, I just, I, I think that we need to recognize that our population center is absolutely Ames, that our tax base is absolutely Ames and surrounding vicinity. Um, and, uh, I think that in order for us to continue to see the outstanding growth eh, by any metric that you want to put on it, uh, population, valuation, or anything you want to put on that we've seen in Story County, we're gonna continue to be forward-looking. And I believe strongly that this item deserves a chance to go before the voters of Ames, who is primarily gonna be the one funding this. Second thing is, and I think, I so appreciate Jane for coming up to the microphone, and like I said, it made me a little nostalgic, um, we need to recognize that this is not even a zero-sum kind of decision because there are, uh, implications for all Story County, uh, with whether some, a concept like the Healthy Life Center gets done, particularly with Hartland Senior Services. I mean, we're in a building that has, and thank you to the city of Ames for allowing us to have this building, but I think we can all agree, it's how you outlive its useful life. I mean, we have to do something, and the county is realistically gonna have a role in that, so I don't believe this is zero gain. Uh, I think this is, this is one of those moments, this is one of those times, it's not an easy vote, but the right vote is to support this.
Thank you for your comments. I'll call your note, Sanders.
Hi.
Martin, no. Also, no. Thank you for everything you've had. I'd like to bring up some things.
Yes.
I said that one of my problems with this is that one-third of Story County residents who are not in Ames would not have the ability to vote on this. I'd like to, um, if you've any interest in here, I would like to ask you about some funding options which would require a vote. Now, according to the public purpose and central functions and general function, all of that.
Yes, please, thank you.
I would like you folks to say, just, yeah, are there some alternatives that would allow Story County residents who are not residents of Ames to vote on time participation?
For the, uh, county's white vote, so we'll be all presidents of the county for voting. And the rest of the general organization. Sixty percent.
I'm going to look here.
And I was, I was counseling, put that on the combined Tuesday election. Because every person in the county will get a ballot, and that way we can achieve most highest turnout, as well as share the thoughts of school districts.
Father Martin, I have a follow-up question relating to that. Um, Ames is looking at their vote in August, so we, we would recommend that it be at the same time as the city school elections. If Ames voters don't pass it themselves, um, is it possible to then pull it? Or, uh, would it be too late?
For a special election, you have to give me the minimum of, um, this time notice, I think it's forty-six days. So you would have plenty of time to get August and extend. Yeah, we're setting the ballot, it would happen by, I think, September twenty-first, if you don't have me do a calendar map from my, uh, another copy.
We all believe that all of this is.
There was, there would be time to make that decision.
So, question, if we're gonna do this, and I appreciate wanting to really provide the school series election, but if we're gonna do this and put it out to the, to the people of Story County, which includes the people of Ames, why wouldn't we piggyback on what Ames was doing? One vote, one day, and it'd be, that's when the most information is gonna be out and it gives everybody an opportunity to weigh in one time, take sixty, take sixty percent within Ames to pass that portion, and it would take sixty percent for the whole county to pass our portion.
Can you do that? So the ballot's in Ames, we have two questions on them, and the ballot for the rest of the county would have.
And we would be responsible for paying our portion of Ames and for the rest of the county. That would be a county-funded election.
And I would do, I would recommend vote centers, so, and those would probably, very roughly, that's about $200,000 or nearly $100,000.
I have a follow-up question on that, related to information. I think that either the steering committee already has a pretty healthy group and a plan going forward to promote it to the Ames residents. We don't really have any type of information plan as of right now, sitting here at this dais, to put out to the Story County residents. And, uh, so thoughts from the two supervisors who have brought this up, or at least are discussing it, and the three of you, about what exactly would that entail, or should we?
Well, I would encourage us to stay out of it and let the Healthy Life Center rule your, if we're gonna put it all about, if it were gonna be county-wide, I would suggest it falls to the Healthy Life Center to try and create the support that they need to create to get that done. I would be hesitant for us to get involved overly involved in a vote on the center or like that.
Well, and I just know that, as I've seen other elections, special elections go forward for amenities, pretty much paying attention to them as a citizen of Ames, and now feeling this, this greater responsibility about how we do, the people that live outside of Ames, how do they get the information separately, especially about financial information from the county? And, uh, so that's my thought, is how do you put that forward about what the numbers are, what in fact, if it were voted for, would the county participate? And it turns out that the numbers issued projected, while not guaranteed, projected by none of those officers turn out to be the right numbers that I base them on in my decision. Do you have any other comments about this option, considering it? I've heard, um, the options providing the school city election, or the option providing the city August sixth election.
Yeah, the August sixth was the city's special election day. I mean, the city could also do it in November, but I don't, but that's not our decision on the county, obviously. But we could put a question on it anytime there's a county-wide problem, if you have one of us, or we could use.
And then, we would be in a situ, would be in a situation where it could carry sixty percent in Ames, and because Ames residents are voting, they might owe that same sixty percent on that same day for the county bond. But you could, what do you, what do you do if then you're outside of Ames, the voters rejected, but there's so many Ames voters themselves that are.
Been attached.
Yeah, that doesn't, with the tip rubbing upon.
Yeah, I'm just asking, Supervisor Mark, here, about, you know, if, if, is it the fact that then we take a look after it and see that every resident outside of Ames defeated it, do you still feel that, 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 that particular population or area of residence was represented?
If you want to.
Okay. It's a unique option we've put forward.
Thank you. Um, I've never made a motion before, such as this, so I don't appreciate any assistance on how to do it.
Uh, before you make the motion, I would encourage you to be really careful not getting outside of your party, I wish you'd. Might be something, Linda, that we're best served, I mean, that I'd look to you, we're best served to get this on a future agenda, for something we want to need.
I understand, so, and I, and I am asking, even though we don't think it would, it would carry through based upon how we ordered, because we've discussed it up, financial support would not, having a motion about how to consider that financial support be part of the agenda, you know, if you're the, the potato to eat.
Let me forward to you, and then say for, for future.
Thank you. So then, here we are right now, is that the original motion, Supervisor Sanders, has failed, and the board, you know, we're discussing, I don't know if we choose to put it before the residents of the county, and that will have to go to a future meeting. Yes, please.
Can I be coming here?
Yes, please. Thank you.
I'm Steve Shanker, City Major, 505, I'm here in Ames. So, just a question, so, what you're recommending is highly unusual, and I think that I understand a little bit where it's going to go. You have to understand that would be immensely confusing to the citizens of Ames. You're gonna have to weigh off the scenarios, they'll authorize you to issue the bonds, if you pass in Ames, doesn't pass in the county, people will be quite frustrated and maybe get it for round. So I just pointed out, I, I think it's probably unprecedented that that kind of election will be held, but I, I appreciate your creativity. The question I have is, so, forevermore, when the board decides to spend money in any city, will the citizens of Ames get a chance to vote on it then, before you make that decision? I mean, you spend a lot of money, there's a lot of bond issuance money that is spent by the supervisors, and it's spent outside of the city of Ames, but it's paid for, at least some is paid for by the citizens, so aren't you setting a dangerous precedent here? I'm just wondering, I know can treat us the same, when you spend money on other bond issuers, than if you spend outside of the city of Ames. I also wanted to make a comment, you know, not money that was spent on the, the research park, just wanted to be clear, the city of Ames did not approach the county for that. It happens to be physically in, in the, I understand the boundaries of it, but that was a separate decision, a wise decision, I agree, by the, the board, economically developed it. Whether that research park was in Colville or in Huxley, we made sure, or the city council made sure, negotiated with the university, that they would pay property taxes. That's a major source of revenue for the county. You can't look at it and say it's only benefiting the citizens of Ames, that's how you're gonna grow your tax base. So, I know you've given some other projects, let's say, Story, Story City, I think you bought the benches and the streetlights, and I understand that in the downtown area, that's a different thing. I'm not sure you've done anything to refund you for the city of Ames per se. That's my part.
Okay, appreciating that. Okay, so, I, I think, I believe where we are is that, um, oh, sure.
And you haven't made a statement about the $200,000 operating, so is that, I just wanted to know where you're thinking about there. You really can't vote on that, I don't believe, on bond issuance election, the operating cost, so, has that been dealt with finally too?
Well, the motion that was put out there was defeated, and that included the $200,000, you're up to $200,000 in that particular motion. So, uh, we can't put that, or you are correct, we can't put that on a vote. That's general operating funds that would come out of taxes, yeah, taxes at that time. So, I just want to make clear, as, as Steve, you're talking about a vote just for the $3 million dollars.
That's what I was suggesting.
For general operation bonds, which would come out of the general fund as opposed to tip.
And Nancy Carroll, to a five stop on the eight, just a couple of points of clarification to, um, with that, you know, this all was built on the premise of why wouldn't we want the $3 million, $200,000, you want to go in, of course, so that we would all play on an equal field for like operational, and people would come and use the facility, which has been always expected of 25% more, so again, I, I, that has to be assessed, and 25 was the baseline, I mean, again, that's, that has to be, there's nothing locked in that 25% would be the, the going rate, and it's not a threat, it's just a point of clarification, you have to build a generic revenue somewhere, and we do believe that county participation, it may range around 30%, but we have to go back to that feasibility study, that that's where it was earmarked, so we have to be looking at how then to pick up for that. The other thing I think is well important to clarify too, um, when we talk about laws, just for the, the media here today and the people that wouldn't have been following this project, we were never publicly, 24 million, 26 million, it went to 48 million, never. When we came out for the first time public with a public meeting, it was after the city had retained very reputable feasibility study consultants, and it was a year ago in February where we were all in attendance at the same meeting, and we said the exact formula that we had never wavered on at 48 million, and how we were suggesting the funding streams could be obtained, and they all, you all knew that they had to be formally dealt with in the days, that day on the county's behalf. I want to be very transparent with the public, we'd never wavered on what that dollar was utilized.
See, have you ever talked to any representative of yours from the city or from the county in, uh, about 24 to 28?
No, never.
Never?
Never.
Can I pull that number?
Never, never. We haven't, I've never even socially used those numbers, never. And again, I want to be very clear, when we had conversation, there may be a lot of conversations that anyone has, unless you use socially or, um, informally, but I want to be very clear, when we go public with anything, it is a feasibility study, and it was held on February 5th of 2018, and that was the document, and we have been very transparent.
Right, well, I, I give you, if that was the first time you said in public, but I know it was said to me.
Well, they were misinformed, and that was unfortunate, they, I don't think they were.
They're, they're on a.
Yeah, yeah, clarification, I think we need to, what is the role of the, the, how do we work on this steering team?
Well, I want to back up to the first issue that you brought up first, and it was when Mayor Haley was speaking about how we're all in this together. It's hard to think we're all in this together when, when, if Ames doesn't buy in, that residents outside of the city are gonna pay a 25% or more. Like, there's a, with that message that's being sent, is we're all in, and we're all in together, we're all one big happy family that play along with each other, but by the way, if you don't give us $3 million, everybody outside of the city of Ames.
Can I just say something else?
Sure.
I just want to say, I've been resident of Ames, I'm currently not a resident of Ames, I spent almost over three of my life in Ames. I agree that Ames, my area of this county. At the same time, um, I need to think about the fact that the residents, the non-Ages residents, the way this law was gonna be set, or the way that Supervisor Sanders was, and was asked, Supervisor Sanders, with Russia, does not allow the third of the residents to have a say in something that has been presented to us as a county-wide facility, that county residents will take advantage of. That's wrong, I felt it was important that there be some vote there. I don't expect that if we put money into, um, as a, as a board of supervisors into something in another community, say Colville, I don't expect that Ames residents are getting a lot of advantage of that, that's where I see the difference on that vote. I also want to say that I know a lot of people who have worked very, very hard on this project, and people who are donating money to this project, who have all their donations, I'm not in any way, but I'm not voting for this, trying to denigrate your word or say that it's not a multiple project. This has been a very difficult vote for me, I didn't know until I got here, to this thing today, how I was going to vote, um, and that's why I spent the time I did looking at the other resources around the county, that's why I spent the time that I did going through this before. So, um, I still think that all of county residents should be allowed to vote on this issue, if there's money into it, because it is a large one.
Back to you, if you have anything reminding, or third, I have confusion, you felt was the.
No, people three, but connect the 25%, laws again, it's, it's the equity factor. It's, this, this 25% has been in place within the city's policy for over 30 years, so it's, it's purely in being physically responsible, to your point earlier, that is what this is, and, and so it's not, again, to be determined what that was saying from me, I think the steering team will have to assess that, given though now, which are not coming in for, for any, there just are costs associated with this facility that now have to be physically resolved. So that's where I just wanted to be clear, that, that has to be assessed, so it's not that we're still not all united, we still see everyone being a Story County resident very welcome to come to this facility, it's not that, it's just though, we have to assess it, and I want to be very clear on that.
I appreciate that, you know, it's a, uh, steering committee.
Is that your representation, wanting to move forward?
Well, um, we're not, actually, we're not redeeming it at this point, I think the board needs to have this discussion, we need to come back on the agenda and talk about what does this mean? What we know today is we didn't go in for $3 million with a, up to $200,000 on, on financial support, okay? That's all, that's what we know today. We need to come back, and we need to have a discussion, and definitely about the suggestion of Supervisor Burke, possibly even at the same time, since there's been philosophy about where to get the money to, you know, to come in, at a low, or maybe, um, I'll have to look at, you know, on the agenda, is that, is it appropriate to be on that agenda too? Since we have different philosophies here about, you know, why the yes and why the no, um, so that's the, that's what I've been doing before, now, and so the question to representation on the steering committee, it seems to be out in the air right now.
We're hoping, again, I think time is of the essence, I do not want to speak on behalf of the city of Ames, but there has been informal conversation within the steering team, that the city council could be trying to move forward and take some sort of action on April 9th, and so we can't get hamstrung either in not moving forward now in an expedient manner, because we were looking to the data, I think, have, kind of actually, where are we at, because we, we've been doing this for over three years now, so, in respect. We do, though, need to keep moving forward in a, in a very, um.
Quick manner.
Quick manner.
So Supervisor Sanders, to your best, your, your journey with the being in town here, the, uh, meetings, we have two, eight or nine?
Yeah, I don't know when, I know, I don't know the point between now and when, but I'm not going yet.
Okay. Supervisor Burke, and I know you're good enough, for a few days we're in Harvey, but I'll be back this week.
All right, yes.
Okay, and, uh, so there would be probably no problem with the meetings, as far as I know, I'm here, so, um, I think your April 9th request, or by April 9th, certainly can go, probably the 26th is what I think, and the reason I'm saying the 26th is we've pushed a lot of things that wanted to be on the agenda today, we pushed them back to next week, to the 19th, I just said, no, okay? So, it would be the 26th where I think that we could discuss what exactly that motion, or what Supervisor Burke was talking about, and also we can have an updated discussion on philosophies we see regarding the situation. So if that pleases the other two supervisors, that fits in your timeframe of the 26th, I imagine we will be seeing most of that in the 26th.
So, before we move on and not, not to, like, this too, too hard, Linda, I just, I want to get some clarity on what you. So before we move on and not, not to, like, this too, too hard, Linda, I just, I want to get some clarity on what you just said, because, um, so, so pushing this thing for a vote for the, what you refer to as the other third of the population outside of Ames, um, I want to know what kind of threshold you're putting on that, because so are you suggesting that any urban renewal bombers need to go to, go to the county? Are you, so we, we spent three million dollars on Davis Lake, that was no little fair, it's not the county, that was, that's what we're likely to do. Four million on tilt, there was no little fair. We're in the process of doing three million for a new radio system, there's no little fair. Eight million dollars on roads and bridges, including roads within Huxley, you can tell you later, there's no little fair. And I, and I'm confused about where the line is, why this one needs to do that and the others do not. And, and is it all already renewed that you're seeing in the future that we're going to make sure that anything that goes out to, outside of Kohol, that's the school district, which is prime and, and a couple of townships, um, that we're going to, we're going to offer an opportunity for the citizens to vote on all that? And I just feel like you're ham, potentially hamstringing what the three of us are elected to do, which is a countywide election for all three of our cities.
And I, I'm still looking back at our civil attorney, and I know now our, our county attorney has joined us, just, I hope he don't give a prompt. And if they start feeling uncomfortable, if we're too far off our agenda.
I don't have any concerns.
Okay, just saying. All right, thank you.
May I have one?
Hi, I'm sorry, it's Mayor Campbell, I'm sorry, go, please.
Mayor Campbell is probably wearing a combination of the Healthy Life Center hat as well as my past mayor hat. Uh, and saying, I, I have difficulty seeing how it can be possible for the city of Ames to base a number for a bond issue on what has been raised philanthropically as well as from the other entities, and then have the county at the same time having a bond issue that may or may not pass. So the city has got to know what they have before a, a bond issue for the city of Ames can be put on the agenda. So, um, I understand wanting to bring county people in, but in this sense, I, I think it is impossible.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Your, your wise advice. We do have a lot of former or current elected officials in here, so from the standpoint of, um, getting the wisdom of experience is, is worth. So, you know, thank you for that. And that's, I, I, like I said, I can have a lot of attorneys and they're comfortable. And, and if we come back and discuss this more, or if we resolve it today, and leave it with the vote the way it is. Um, that's, or there's, or there's a motion for a smaller amount, you know, we turn down any particular amount. So that's why I'm looking here at that. So right now, you, you've, this, this is where you would like us to bring it back. And the board has had a long standing to let you know that, um, that if a supervisor wants something discussed, um, every attempt is made to accommodate that supervisor on a, on a jury agenda. With only three of us, it's, it's the best way to do it, so that was sailed without staying transparent.
What presented my motion, or try to present one, you suggested motion as an option. That's the only way we can discuss what our options are, or have us to, to, to.
So thank you. And I'm going to look at Shelley during one, will we get a second, or did we need to discuss it before a second?
It is one motion, thank you. Supervisor Sanders, question whether I can do that under our agenda as opposed to.
Then we got from our attorney, it needed to be the separate, separate agenda. All right. So, um, we're going to stick with on the twenty-sixth. And we will discuss, uh, whether you want to make that motion, we can discuss it further. And then we'll discuss also about, um, urban renewal, to have the opportunity, discussion, and, uh, we will once again try to have what would be a definitive motion and all three, whether it would support, whether they like it or not. But if there's a vote, a finality of a vote here. Thank you, once again, for those of you who can. Thank you. Thank you, Ethan, for being in here. Probably going to ask some thoughtful questions for you, how to get to March twenty-sixth, okay? All right, we're going to move forward. And, uh, Alyssa?
I'm.
Please not to go there. Okay, ask them. All right. If anybody else wants to take their two minute break? Now we're near time, we do it. We went for Alyssa and Susan to go forward. Yes, two minute break. We're tall, three, we come to the door. Much thanks, I think, Mr. Interfactory, you are excited, I think Supervisor Burke has started on the introductory, should be back. Let's go ahead. It was two minutes. Do you want to, did you want to list the agenda item, or are we just? Yes, I will list the agenda item. We are now going to begin with discussion and consideration of the fiscal year twenty health insurance options presented as, uh, Alyssa. We know, and.
Good morning. Um, we are here today, our, as many of you are aware, the removal came back at thirty-three point two percent. So at the point we received that removal, um, we, we took it, we marked it, actually, we took it out for a minute. Um, I am going to let Debbie just kind of describe a little bit of, of what we did and how we've been doing our best from the other two. Sure. Yes, thank you. So we did take the removal and we were able to find a data, a bit of medical help in our cross machine. And higher, those are our other two fully insured providers. As such, we did receive a proposal from United Healthcare. However, it actually was a proposal that we hired across the, they have a new social partner. Walmart on the other end came back with better pricing than what at price to us. And at the, they took an opportunity to show you a piece of some, you want their pricing down some, however, Walmart's pricing, both platforms, networks that they provide, both their broad-based national network and their highways network, both provide minimal pricing at this point.
Debbie, I'm going to ask them, will you leave your mic?
The audio is on three.
Okay.
That will reject.
Oh, it won't? Well, that's my problem. Okay. Sounds good. It does to me, maybe I'm a little bit hard to get this.
I may not be talking loud enough, so I will try to speak a little louder as well. So, um, just what we have, uh, in short, we still have a significant removal to manage, but that increase is less at Walmart on their alliance select network. And then we're looking at the alternate network, which is the higher risk network. Again, we still have an increased voting lines, again, have, in a lot of figures of what we initially were facing. Actually, quite a bit less than half of what we were initially facing, thirty-three percent of the citizens actually. And we have asked both providers, both the United Healthcare and Walmart, to match our competitive benefits. United did not match exactly, but given the fact that they have the highest price venue, it made little sense to force them to tweak much, because the ones with attention, I have a less for you. So we just want to make sure it's clear that, that it is what the current offer were matched, the design.
I'll ask, is either of you hearing any questions?
I do. Uh, this is a little bit reminiscent of last year, I'm having to look at providers. And, uh, the, last year's board decided to stay with ATNA. There was a little bit of a difference, but it felt it was in the employee's best interest, um, to leave with ATNA. Now, you're recommending that we switch.
That's very good. Um, and so. Sure. And, and I'll just bring up a little bit before we get into a recommendation. So, so what, what you see on the agenda is the sixty-five million dollars that we purchased, the mature product that we purchased at, and the rates from Walmart. What we offer our employees is different. We partially left that down to different, um, points. So we have a five million dollar divestment. So we also need to look at what those rates would be, what we would charge for those rates, to determine what the increases would be for our employees. So while we do have an increase on the product that we buy, it's not directly the same increase that we've always discussed, if that makes sense. We, we, in essence, the rates, the monthly rates that we have are the original rates that we offer, what we offer. And there is an index, we need, we need an amount to partial self fund.
And, um, this is fun about, rather quick, since you got the rate, so, uh, will the employees have an opportunity to weigh in on this? Or will we be making the determination today?
We're asking the board to make a change today, um, the rates would come back in the next time. We do have two bargaining contacts that have rates set for the map, um, and, and as practices of taking a raise on this.
Question is, we, assuming this board continues, um, I think the direction set by a previous board, that we would try to move toward fully self-insuring, uh, over the next couple of years. Um, are you, are you factoring that into your recommendation, where we'd like to end up, uh, running, uh, administering our program when we're fully insured?
Yes, we, we had discussion, Debbie and I had a discussion about this, I mean, Walmart is our application. That's where we, we like to, we do have options. Um, I do want to note that the partial self funding that we, this is July first, has worked well. We just don't have enough playing down it in different, but it doesn't long enough to see, um, how that would affect. We moved to that so that we can try to stabilize our priorities. Unfortunately, we are first year, Doug knows. Um, when we look at the whole, the whole rates we would charge employees, um, we did reach out and ask this best agenda, what the increase really comes to plans, and they said, they gave us an estimate, a ton of more personnel. That's not an exact, the actual, you're saying it could be slightly more, slightly less, but in short, they're probably not likely to calculate with that exactly, if we had a five million, the one thousand dollar plan, unless we had a major purchase. And given how much of the funding has worked, it would not be a, a, the idea to move back and purchase the five million, the one thousand dollar plan over on a higher level, in the purchase. So all we have from them is the percent rest. We do have the rates offered, we do have the mental networks, and there increases would be, um, substantially less for the majority of the plans. There were two, for sale, or that, you don't have to say, we must say that we have, none of that. But the family, the percentage increase of the other plans were, it, it, it will choose, they are around fifty to sixty percent for that Walmart, Walmart.
Other questions?
All right, do you want to take a motion?
Can I just make that?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Our two bargaining contacts had a, because laws in there that required change in carrier, uh, the employer rate to be European. I did, that impacted we were, we were, trying to get ahold of you, about the situation on us, and what the top management was, to reflect that obligation.
So are you guys, at the point that you're willing to make a recommendation on the other carrier?
Do you have anything else to say about the options? Anything to change in carrier, but there would be. We will like, we'll be able to like. The option in front of the board, the recommendation for me is to move to Walmart. We looked at the numbers. The decision will coordinate these, which whichever. We got a line of select to be parallel to what we currently offer. And there's a.
And I think you said that we could offer both of those without any numbers. I mean, if one employee chose to take one of those, would have to have a certain number?
What Walmart has indicated is that they do, they do technically have a percentage, but they don't require that operation to be. So in essence, the female confirmation that I have for Walmart is that yes, they will allow a second. Even if they're one, it rolls.
That's good news, and it's important to offer some choice to me to start now.
Another piece that I like, that I affirmation is the. As far as employing negotiations. So in order for it to be affordable, our employing negotiations will be this. And as, as looking at this moving to Walmart, we would be like that. We use the federal economy of how we look at and we want to just change. Still we have little, so we do have concerns. Just something we see, we got twenty to thirty percent increase that across the market as large as will be strong.
So I hear a preference and a recommendation for Walmart. Correct. So you're taking your motion? I move that we go to the Walmart plans, the line of select, and the new choice of sixty-five hundred dollar plans.
Yeah, I second, I just want you guys to reiterate, is there a downside? So I understand that Walmart has said we can do this, is there a downside to us?
You know, right at this point, here's the main objective. Any insurance can win a bonus at not wanting to get always has the option of some future to stay. We are one quarter, we have three or five or ten percent of this over. Because just because they're waiting that now doesn't mean that it's up in the future. They might not choose to force it. However, as a general rule, Walmart is with the newer, the most of our public entities in the state. Whether we're targeting them as schools or cities, that can, that can be both good and bad. Because a general, good one can partner with that. And as we tour self funding, truly the decision at that point is ours, because it cannot be.
Yes, I see value in seeing where our employees would choose to. And so I like this option as long as you guys don't see any barriers to.
I just want to remind, remind everybody that this is a setting here. I will be coming back to that always with the tuition rates. Because with Walmart, at least one of the plans that does trigger the employee contribution. So I'll be back in front of the board to decide employee contribution rates. First step is determining which carrier.
So we got a motion, I believe we got one for second from Sanders. All right. For the discussion? Perfect. Sanders?
Aye.
Listen, aye, thank you. You guys have a tough job.
Oh, wonderful.
Yes, yes, wow. You've been scrappy, thank you. Well, now we be entering into our public hearings portion. And we begin by the introduction of elected officials and department heads. And whatever, just starting in the front row, stand up and introduce yourself as president. It's going to be the easiest way, but they just go around here, right?
Julie Brogdon, Director of Facilities Management.
Good morning, there is, I'm Jessica Reynolds, Terry County Attorney.
Good morning, good morning.
Stacy Harry, Story County Recorder.
Liz Yumar, Story County Editor.
Jerry Moore, Planning and Development.
Sue McCaskey, Story County Analyst.
Well, tell us the way you work for Internal Operations and Human Resources.
That's Shalha, Director of External Operations and County Services.
Going to the back row, I can see a chair back there. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Community Services Director.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I started with the back, all right.
Edna, Story County Attorney. Both external, Story County Sheriff.
Good morning, everyone. And we'll turn it over to Ms. Lawrence Lee and Ms. Yumar.
Welcome to the public hearing. I'm the folks that by community budget, this is published in all three official newspapers. As required by law. The ones that include that period's not rehired and published, but can be called in this group appearance. Having announcement or what's on the agenda. What is on the website and just presentation. Story County, this evaluation increases. Um, we roll back, everybody, probably how many three seven point five, seven and one point nine two four. Percent rollbacks are applied to the valuation increases. For residential this year, it's fifty-six point nine. Agriculture, fifty-six point one. Commercial industrial, ninety percent. And the prices, seven point five. This is what you actually pay if taxes, if you have a hundred thousand dollar house. It would be a slight fee for taxes. So we held our practical meetings back in January, mid-January. Now here, those are all on the website, remember. There was an endless measure, there was a product of salary adjustments for five bargaining units. We have two percent in time period during the medical access. There's a two percent asset agreement adjustment or non-union. And health insurance premium reduction, increase fifteen percent. It's about worth thirty-eight dollars. The asset contribution was increased by one hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-one thousand. And we have a CIP, capital group plan. It's going to be presented with the answer next week. The numbers aren't included in this budget and will spend it for secondary maintenance equipment. Captain and defense. Health base three, at the I H U research department. Very mild damage expansion, M E D S leg. The resource replacement, H back work point replacement, and equal work replacement. We're also putting this money, the revenue. The different funds of the county levies for, I'll explain for Kevin Meyer. County, county ID's other times taken the story county pays this. For the general fund, which is the majority of our funding as in a general fund, is three dollars and fifty cents per person. Supplemental is limited to certain mandated services, it's also on countywide. Supplemental levy proposed in this budget is in the P C by seven hundred and seventy, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars and eighty-two cents. Per thousand to a dollar, two, three dollars for this year. Mainly, or excuse me, make sure it's costed. The county M H D S fund, maximum levy is happening in totally different manner than any other levy. Where you have per region based on how the nation is such regions. For our region, for capital, one is thirty-five dollars and fifty cents, which is translating into three million four hundred sixteen dollars. Three hundred twenty-one dollars, excuse me. The region recommended two point one for Star County, which in turn is a levy of forty-four cents, which is over forty-seven percent. The debt service levy, we're anticipating we got this year for secondary roads projects up to eight million. And story firm upgrades up to three million, so we're levying sixteen cents per thousand of that. Overall basic is all residents in the uncoordinated area and the maximum is three dollars and ninety-five cents. The recommended three dollars and forty-eight cents per thousand. Taxes fees, which is proposed by the higher of like two point four million dollars. And the overall levy rate is higher by six cents per thousand for countywide and sixteen for rural. Some work through all the budget sections and then it all looks different when it comes to population cases by service area. What I've done here is put together of our budget revenues by service area. It's sixty-five percent of forty-two point four dollars, forty-two point four million dollars in revenue, sixty-five percent on certain property taxes. Twenty-one percent is from intergovernmental, which would include the road use tax, escape replacement taxes, commercial industrial replacement, state and federal grants. Five percent is going to come from local option sales tax, six percent from fees for services. Two percent tip revenue and one percent interest income. Our expenses of forty-three is about five million dollars. Again, by service area, that's how we budget, that's how we put our budget file. Thirty percent of our dollars, thirteen million, is for public safety and legal services, including services for sheriff and deputy. Fifteen percent or six point six million dollars is classified as administration. That's the name for the consulting management, for buildings, information technology, work supervisors, gambling and health insurance, bodyguard, treasury. Two percent of our budget, about six point three is for roads and transportation, is second members. Eleven percent of four point five is for county environmental education, and for, and interface for funds. Funds conservation, animal control, planning and development, IRPM, the county libraries and environmental projects. Four point nine is for the capital projects, for projects and C I P projects. Six percent, two point six million, our percent health and social services, and the environmental health, county sort, community services, V A, Juvene Corps, the Justice Department, Office, and maybe the assets services. One point nine is for environmental, for local and regional. One point six is for bond debt and one point five is for government services, governmental services, which is classified as the recorder, the auditors, elections, and recents, motor people. This is where we come up with what we want in our annual fund balance by expenses by fund. You know, about twenty-five percent in the general and supplemental, which have been subject to the mortgage expense. Overall, we find a secondary road spending fairly steady, so the budget goes to the twenty percent of the fund balance. This is our budgeting, county budget for first, for the last seven years. The Dr. Bush shows the budgeted expenses, the red is the budgeted revenues. In the F Y twenty budget, the expenses are nine point five percent higher than the F Y nineteen budget, and the revenues are six percent. Six point one percent higher than the F Y nineteen. This shows the current year distribution of downloads by taxing authority. We'll take a look at individual on the next slide, but this gives you a snapshot of overall where the practice of one is. I'm generally like, like taxing authority. Schools get about forty-six percent of their dollars, cities get about twenty-five percent of our dollars, about seventeen percent at the county, and then all the other entities are below five percent. Quick story city this year, so Lucy, which city shall I test? So if you live in the city of Story City, becoming the president's office to pay your taxes, the breakdown of public numbers and distributed is representative here. So this is basically mainly on last year's levies because all the entities are now posting their levies in our offices or fail. Our office X one speed, but I imagine the counties, who probably spend this one. Schools, I just don't get certified until April thirteen, so that's not, that's another line. You have a home assessed at a hundred thousand, I already talked about the rollback, so we have taxes, we have, we think this is twenty-nine. Your annual taxes would be seventeen hundred eighty-six dollars. Our head of the school, Rolling Store, will receive forty-four percent. My city, we get thirty-three percent, county, we get sixteen percent, and the areas will get two percent. The other, which includes ag expansion, county disaster, and story county hospital, will be about five percent. You live in Lafayette Township and Lafayette Township and local elementary school this year. The pie would be just a little bit different because there would be no state taxes, there would be township taxes instead. Here it'd be fourteen hundred twenty-seven dollars and the school would be thirty-five percent of your taxes. County thirty-three percent, township thirty percent. And like this area school, three percent, we have one, twenty-six percent. I'm going to put this out on the website.
None.
Great job, as always.
So comments, thoughts here before we go ahead and go on to item number four, which is consideration of resolution nineteen ninety as recommended by the Story County compensation. Setting elected official salaries.
Yeah, so, yeah, so one comment before we go on. I just, I want to point out again, giving historical context to where we are. So the graph that I love is up there. We've gotten to a point on the graph where it doesn't show where we were prior to F Y fourteen. And, and how, this, this is the graph I'm talking about. And what in, what happened here prior to two thousand fourteen is, you would see the blue line on top of, and dramatically on top of, in some cases, revenue line. And I'm going to go back to F Y two thousand nine. F Y nine, we are spending, the proposed budget here is in essence the same number of expenditure dollars that were spent in two thousand nine. The difference is in taxes, taxes collected in two thousand nine from the people of Story County was eighteen million dollars. And we're up to twenty, twenty-eight million now. We knew that there was a shift at the state back then, that we were going to put more and more on the back of local taxpayers. And that is in essence what we're seeing. But this idea that because, because we've got expenditures ahead of revenues this one year, that it's a terrible thing, I don't believe it is. And what I would point to is what we're able to get done in our capital improvement program with our capital projects. We did, what we budgeted just over four million dollars last year, we got almost five million dollars budgeted this year. That's got to be more, Lisa, that's got to be more than the previous eight or ten years combined in terms of capital projects that we were able to budget. We'd always been in that one to two million dollar range prior to that. So we're getting some great things done. And we're buying some of this deferred maintenance and some of the needs for Story County residents down by our wise budgeting all the way through. And I just, I, I've been hearing this, this subtext that it's not looking good, that it's not fine. And it, and it really, really is. So I just wanted to give you that historical feel of where we were, where we are, and where I think we're going.
I commend the previous boards, I think it was a couple of different boards since twenty fourteen, in taking a, taking the nerves in the times and reacting to that and being able to do that. And there's no question that your leadership was a great part of that. To portray me as doing well, I don't feel I'm doing well. I'm trying to carry on, but I believe it will be solid, right? So, so and then with that, I think we probably passed that one to that, for today in the previous discussion. So, and we will probably have more discussions on that. So right now, taking a look at what we've got right here. Comments about where we were published, because we went out and published it, but higher amount than, oh, I'm sorry. We've got an item to deal with before we talk about that. So let's go back to the elected official compensation. Sorry, so the either of you appear to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve nineteen ninety as recommended by the compensation. Go in, and I guess I'll wait till second and I'll make a note.
Perfect. Yes, I'll submit.
Yeah, and, and just a note that we did, in fact, longer the portion came to the board to supervise, specifically the board supervisor chair.
Correct.
Already, and so that should be recognized, or it's not part of this motion, should be recognized.
It's actually in the motion.
It's actually in the resolution.
Okay, great. Right? Sanders?
Aye.
Perfect. All said aye. We will go ahead and now, if you're going to help me walk through this part, I would walk with that.
So on my agenda, it just says we do the public hearing before we do what we just did. And so I was worried that maybe we missed, that we missed something.
Did I? All right. I will open the public hearing, thank you, I will open the public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Seeing no one's got forward, we will close the public hearing. Thank you. And now, we will go on down to the discussion and action on the proposed budget. So I open up for comments from everyone.
Well, we, because the tax rates in the budget application, we did so because the legislature was talking about policies for the future on our funding lines, our generating abilities. We don't know what the legislature is going to feel about that. And so the legislature's done this year, so maybe just see how we feel about that now, because I didn't know that I saw that primary decision, but that was kind of a place for a decision. So I'm glad to hear how this is going, think about that right now.
I'll go if, yeah, so it's, in essence, is us raising three hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars more than is absolutely required for this year's budget. I believe it's the wise decision based on what we don't know. I would hope that if we, if we go down this road and we approve a budget as, as published, that we recognize that it ought to mean that we're able to hold our increases in check next year, assuming the state doesn't do something, what, you know, kindly referred to as nuts. But the key is, if they do, we put ourselves, with Story County, in as favorable a position as possible, because it's not the three hundred thousand dollars this year that matters, it's the compounding of that over the next decade that matters, that you'd be looking at, somewhere in the neighborhood of three point three, three point four million dollars, all said and done, that we would have access to, to serve the people of Story County, that we would be limited from if we don't take this preemptive step. I'm not a fan of them. I don't like the tax rates going up. I'm happy to report that they're nowhere close to what they were the first time I sat down in this chair, but they are very clearly going up, and it's a pretty dramatic jump in one year. But I think it's the reasonable, responsible thing to do this year, based on what we know. We just need to recognize that it is, it is pulling three hundred thousand dollars more than we probably would have to, but it's based on something that we're afraid the state's going to do.
I, when I was thinking about that, doing the numbers, you know, that I did a little mini calculation there, and it is from the supplemental, so it is countywide, and I do agree that sitting here for the three hundred thousand dollars this year, we're still in protection from what will happen, may happen, and that we hopefully will not have to look at an increase for a year, a couple of years. I'm still more with the rural fund, leaving that at the nine percent, or the point nine something percent there. Although I take into account during our budget workshop discussions, in that we had not raised taxes at all on the rural fund, I'm still thinking that maybe that's a little too high for, for the unincorporated areas. So I would be willing to consider coming down on the rural fund part of it for the unincorporated areas. And I would come down about four cents, four to five cents.
What would that generate down some of the funds?
We're looking at fourteen point nine percent right now, or it's not going to be. I remember the comment that you made about it being a bad year for, for people who are far, impacted, and are also.
So you said four cents?
Yeah, four cents.
I'm going to motion to, to use the, most grateful first sense for this question.
Okay. Am I going to second there? Yeah, I'll second. Murphy?
Yes.
Sanders?
No.
Wilson?
Yes.
So you're going down four percent.
Four cents.
Four cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that takes us all the way through the budget portion of our agenda. I'm looking for a nod of affirmation. So, what if you really brought the show? Okay, all right, thank you. All right. So now, we will go ahead, we'll slip over and invite county attorney Jessica Reynolds up to the microphone. We'll talk about consideration of ordinance two eighty-two, and it says, it's the first consideration of ordinance of Story County, Iowa, providing for cremation fees. Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Oh, yes, sorry. Good morning, good morning.
Just final story, county attorney. Just as a refresher, this is the ordinance of just the six, the six person. It was published on March seventh, and I'm ordering today, this is a text of ordinance requesting passage of it after review of public trainees. I haven't had any feedback, however, there's been back from C C J and their board, their attorney, and so I also request that we consider reading the second.
Thank you. Motion or comments?
All of them.
I'm going to down who, wait, it's a public hearing. Thank you. Thank you. All right. I'm sorry, we'll open the public hearing. Seeing no one, sorry. I will close the public hearing. Now I'll take.
I would give approval of ordinance number two eighty-two as presented and would like second and third.
Second.
Discussion, and we're further, Murphy?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your assistance.
Have a great afternoon.
You too, yes. And after a minute, right, thank you. Now, Jerry Morris coming up for the next discussion and consideration of Resolutions nineteen sixty-two and nineteen sixty-three, partial acquisition and vacation of nineteen hundred, hundred ninety-nine Street right away, which is Northwood Heights, second to fourth additions. Good morning, Jerry.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, I know. Okay. It's still morning in my mind, wow. It is. Yeah, by afternoon, I mean, yeah.
I didn't get home till three eight. I'm at, I'm at nine P M, you know, I like that time.
Well, the grand elections, but did you have a big time out of town?
Yeah, so beginning even ended last night about, what, ten o'clock in the whole city, and then getting back is three hours.
Okay. Well, thank you for your participation and your help. All right, Jerry, we'll turn the back over to you for the presentation.
All right, so vacation acquisition request, David and Mary Corey are the applicants. Mr. Clarence Corey is here today, who I'd like to acknowledge and thank. He's been very helpful during the S R M and review and S R M staff, and so I want to thank him for his assistance.
You got to see Governor Manette's files today.
So David and Mary are the applicants. They live at forty twenty-five, one hundred ninety-ninth Street. They're interested in acquiring some property from the Sterns, who live at thirty-eight fifty-five, one hundred eighty-ninth Street. Their property is contiguous and just to the east and south of the Corey's. And as staff was reviewing the request, we were concerned that the Stern property, if they acquired this land, would fall under the minimum lot size in the R one district, which is twenty-five thousand square foot. So we started looking at the area and noticed right away that there was some issues with the rightway. There's more area on the north side, particularly adjacent to this proposed request. And so to address the rightway issues and try to help the applicants with the request, we suggested vacation and the acquisition as the approach. So one hundred ninety-ninth Street is a private street, maintained, and owned by all the property owners within Northwood Heights, subdivision. This just shows you the subdivisions, so the second addition is actually the largest area, has the most number of lots in, in dwellings. The third addition is on the very end, it happens to be owned by the homeowners association, and then the second addition is in the center. So the Corey's property is right here. The area that they're interested in acquiring is the triangular shaped piece, it's the more area of the Stern property. It's just these, they're the detached garage, it's right here, glowing for the Corey property right here, glowing for the Stern property right here. They're also interested in acquiring additional land just south of the El Pino. This shows you the rightway, that's the purple lines. You can kind of see here how disproportionate the north rightway line is compared to the south rightway line. This black line represents the common property line between the parcels on the north side and the parcels on the south side. So through the vacation, which is on the north side, we're going to reduce that space, give it more proportion, and similar to the rightway distance that's on the south side. This is the map that was submitted by someone's associates. There's a couple of things going on here. The first thing is, we're showing you the existing rightway width, so it's the farthest line is the north rightway line, curvy. The second line from the bottom is the south rightway line. And so what's proposed is to make it more curvilinear and match up better with the actual existing road. So the cross hatch area on the north side represents the vacation area, and the south portion represents the acquisition. These two lines, or excuse me, these two arrows represent existing property line, which again is this black line, which is close to the center of the road. And then what's proposed will be more curvilinear in this area, following the center of the actual street. So there's two processes set out in the Story County law regulations for vacations under eighty-seven point one zero. Arpia references state law code by one thirty-four point two-two, which is a process that's initiated by private owners, or in this case, property owners. The other process is initiated by county, governmental entities in situations where RP has been dedicated to the public, which is deemed to be by the governing body, no benefit to the public. We did ask the county attorney's office to weigh in on the two processes, and with this particular situation, they suggested first the S R, which is a process brought by private owners. So we do have full support of all the man orders that were going to be affected by the vacation and acquisition, and that's possibly again, so. History, Northwood Heights, second through fourth additions, again, it's R one, transitional residential district, subdivisions were applied in nineteen sixty-eight, two thousand six, two thousand nine. Looking at about twenty-three building lots, twenty-three single family homes. The area is about eight hundred feet northwest of the city names. Corey's acquired their property in two thousand seven, and Mr. Stern acquired his property in two thousand four. This shows you the changes with the existing lot area. Right now, the Sterns are, excuse me, the Corey's have a little over an acre, and they're going to be changing to one point one two acres, which will be an increase of about forty-seven hundred, forty-seven hundred square feet. The Stern property will increase about twenty-one hundred square feet after the vacation acquisition. Communication side, we start with this request back in May twenty eighteen. Public notices were held, property owners within a quarter mile, state law says three hundred feet within a quarter mile, communicate with utility companies in the area, mortgage holders. In February twenty fifteen, we prepared publications, we were required to do two publications in the three newspapers, as needed by a board. We did that March seventh. And February twenty-first, we did communicate with Games Planning Housing, they deferred their review on the rightway acquisition, or actually reviewing the bond line adjustment between the two lot owners. And then county attorney's office did their review on the agreement that was prepared in October twenty eighteen, and the actual S R that was presented in February eleven eighteen. Site phones, Corey's property, we're looking through the northeast, we're going to travel to the east down one hundred eighty-ninth Street. This gives you an idea to the area, what they'd like to acquire. This is right, we have big snow, about the Stern right wing to the east, the dinner property, and then that's the intersection, five hundred thirteen down one hundred ninety-ninth Street, on the north, turning one hundred eighty degrees, this is the homeowners association property to the south. Looking to the west, one hundred eighty-ninth Street, Murphy glowing on the south side of the road. North Dakota Avenue, looking south, looking to the north, the Pantry to the east, one hundred eighty Street. Points to consider, again, this started with the request of acquiring some property by the Corey's from the Sterns, who want to make sure that the Stern property didn't fall under the minimum lot size requirement. Looking at a total of about point four acre, which is a little over seventeen thousand square feet of land to be taken in. Plans on commission, addressed the request on March sixth, have been meeting. There was nobody from the general public that spoke and supported our opposition. We had a question from the chair about whether or not the property owners that were affected in the previous, if they were contacting, we assured that they'd order, and they did provide a document at the same by all of those parties. And so based on the information that was provided to the county's on the commission, they voted four to zero to recommend approval of the vacation and acquisition. This is admin O two dash eighteen, that's alternative one, which is the board supervisors recommends approval of the partial vacation and acquisition of one hundred eighty-ninth Street right away, located in Northwood Heights, second through the fourth additions as per the admin O two dash eighteen, and given as resolutions eight, nineteen dash sixty-two and nineteen ninety-sixty-three.
Thank you. All right. Any questions before we open the public hearing?
Just one. So, so I understand vacating the, kind of the north rightway, acquiring the south rightway, that's all homeowner association ground?
Right.
How does that legally happen? I mean, who's the legal entity? They, or, or do we just have the authority to make that happen?
They, the attorney provided those deeds, the various types of deeds, then addressed all of the property ownership changes.
Okay.
And so the rightway, what they gave us was easement, and some additional portions, so we have, we're bestowed the right to, for the general public to use this space that's being.
So it doesn't matter where online it is, from a legal perspective?
Right. And it'll, it'll stay in private?
Okay.
Other questions? About only the public hearing. Mr. Corey, did you want to say anything? You don't have to, but.
If I had to answer any questions.
I don't think the board has any questions. Jerry and his staff doing a great job preparing us with that report. It's nice to see two neighbors get along. You read so much, and you all worry about people who don't get along, so that's, that's a very amiable solution there, so.
Any reason for us not to weigh in second and third?
Actually, this is, it's not an ordinance, it's a resolution.
So we do see it on that.
Okay, all right.
So I move, oh, sorry.
Now I thought I remembered. All right, we're going to close this public hearing, all right? And I'm going to entertain a motion.
Yeah, I, I approve that we approved resolutions nineteen sixty-two and nineteen sixty-three.
Excellent. All right. No further discussion, Sanders?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Wilson? Aye. Enjoy your remote line. Thank you very much. Next, we'll go to consideration of minutes.
We propose the orange fifth twenty nineteen.
Second, you go ahead.
All right, no problem, and. And, uh, Burkin?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson? Aye. Consideration of personnel actions?
Do you have consideration of personnel actions?
Second.
Burkin?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson? Aye. Now, would you consent agenda?
We have to involve the, um, consent agenda's listing.
Second.
Burkin?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Okay. We have no other items except for the legislative assignments, that you made in updates and announcements, et cetera. And I'll let supervisor Sanders tell us in one minute for the, yes. Sorry, public forum two. Anyone care to participate in public forum two? Thank you, seeing no one. Now, Costa Rica?
Costa Rica was awesome, uh, highly recommended. It was where we went, was a non-converstallized area, and so lots of jungle, lots of monkeys, lots of beach time. I think I broke my big toe hiking in the jungle, but other than that, it was an N L L sunburn, it was a phenomenal trip. And then D C, uh, you know, I, I just find so much value in Diego, I appreciate former supervisor Howard, uh, getting off topic just a little bit today to address that. Uh, but, uh, actually had an opportunity, uh, to speak to a full house in the cabinet, um, presentation on house services in, uh, in county jails, lending it would have been much more appropriate for you to give that presentation for us. But since I was there and I was asked, I did, uh, had several senators and congresspeople in a full room. I think the video is, is available on Diego website on that presentation. Was joined by two other county commissioners and one sheriff, uh, out of the state in court, uh, to do that. And, uh, the rest of it was, um, meetings galore and lots of good networking opportunities. The weather was terrible, uh, but not as bad as you guys had here. And then finally, uh, got back this time to go to Oklahoma City with the Iowa State Women's Basketball Team, who, uh, they did a great job, lost last, late last night to some Bayards, you know, one team in America. Uh, and then we got on a charter plane and came home, and I got home about, like I said, three A M, and looking forward to seeing that, yes, I'm counting.
Okay, before we leave, uh, could you just tell us about your new, uh, previous type of service?
Yes, I don't know a lot about it at this point. Uh, council on human services, uh, governor called and asked if I would please take that on as kind of a, a last minute, uh, request, and, and I am, uh, either really, really good at saying yes to the governor when she asked, or really, really bad at saying no to the governor when she asked, so I'll learn more as I learn more. Uh, it appears that they, um, meet once a month on, uh, on Thursday mornings, which works into, uh, uh, my current calendar, and, um, I'll tell you more as I know more.
Okay, all right. Supervisor Burkin?
Well, I'm still meeting with the county staff, because winning with staff, I spent some time this last week, I'm talking with the general version staff, Stacy and Tyler, they're doing a wonderful job. Um, and I'm, I'm very proud, I also, um, the sheriff's office retreat, and I'm going to be proud of, um, what everybody in the jail staff is doing. Also, our county employees who are working on water shit, we're working through, are continuing to lobby and add, so a couple more people, and also looking at the implementation matrix, and do some more refinements, and, and we're really on roll. So in a few weeks, we're going to have a report to those supervisors.
Good.
And then I'm going to leave here tomorrow and go see the Grand Canyon, and I hear it's going to be snow.
In Arizona?
Yes.
First time I went to the Grand Canyon, it was so foggy, you couldn't see your hand in front of your face, and I'm going to tell you, there's nothing less impressive than the Grand Canyon in Des Moines.
Oh, I'm just really looking for.
Oh, yeah.
The Grand Canyon, yeah, perfect. That's it, I'll be back in a minute.
Great. Uh, just want, want to acknowledge that we had a session this morning, uh, for Sunshine Week, and we did have a couple of journalists show up, so thank you for that, um, dear to my heart, that sunshine week. Uh, I attended several meetings, the one that stuck out for me was actually the briefing, um, after closure of I thirty-five during the blizzard that we had. And I'd never been to a full briefing like that before, and they pointed out that the truckers, I think the big themes were communication, and the truckers did not want to go and tar at Hilton and Jack Drive Stadium because there was no diesel fuel there, or food, or , or restrooms. So I think that that's one of the big lessons that came out of this, is the, the emergency responding group are going to reexamine some of their assumptions as they move forward in cases ever happens again. And with that, thank you everyone for sitting through the morning and the afternoon. Thank you to all the staff that worked very hard on budget numbers to lead us up to this budget, and, um, everybody have a good rest of the week. Thank you. Uh, I moved German. Thank you. All right.
Prolegative report, do you like?
I don't know, I, after I copy it. Thank you. All right, we are moved into German. Okay, thank you.